I probably should wear it.
Jason, you ready to go?
Yes, I got it. I don't pass it to you.
Mason Channel, good evening. To each of you that would like to call this meeting to order, if you will stand, Councilwoman Andrews will have her invocation. Ladies and I pledge allegiance.
Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we are grateful to be here to be able to serve our city and citizens. And we would ask thee to please bless our citizens with health and safety. Please bless the city workers as they work hard for the city, that they will be blessed. Please also bless our frontline workers who are there putting their lives on the line to protect our citizens every day, and also our men and women in uniform who serve and protect our country. We are very grateful that we have the opportunity to serve and ask that you please bless us in our thoughts and actions, that we will be inspired to do the thing that's best for our citizens. And when we say these things, and then...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, thank you, Jen. We are missing Councilman Southall. He's a little under the weather, but I think we have him by phone. Are you there, bud?
Yes, I am going.
Okay, pal. All righty. First item on our agenda, we have some special presentations in the ring. Can you make the introduction, please?
Thank you. Come on up, Kyle. So, council, you all know Kyle. He has been our financial advisor for pretty much the entire time I've been here. Sometimes you also see David Rose and a few others, but Kyle is our lead. Purpose tonight is to talk about the, an idea for moving forward for the financing on the balance for the public safety building, and also to share with you an idea with regard to a future fine tuning amendment to our financial policies.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of council, nice to see you.
Welcome, sir. As always, thank you, sir. And I appreciate the introduction. We've got our clicker here, so I think we're officially ready to go. I think what you have up on the screen, I believe you have in front of you as well. Very good. I have extras if not. But again, with the manager's introduction, really a discussion here in terms of the Public Safety Station, and the ability to take advantage of some of the federal dollars, take advantage of the fact that interest rates while they are higher than they were last year, are still at very favorable levels. And also linking into that, a enhancement to some of our longstanding financial policies that have really served as the cornerstone of how you've been able to manage through and be in such good financial shape like you are. And so we'll talk about those things. So, again, I think you know who we are, and we appreciate the introduction, and certainly appreciate the partnership with the city for all these years. And so by virtue of what you, with this council, prior councils, a lot with the manager and assistant, et cetera, have been able to accomplish over the last several years, has put you in a position with this Public Safety Center project to really take advantage of some of this federal money that's coming in terms of the ARPA dollars, and get a very substantial project out of that with relatively limited investment by virtue of your taxpayers from the city. And so we're going to talk through that and how that would work. We'll talk about the estimated funding sources for that project, where we are in terms of interest rates, give you a sense and a refresher of our credit ratings, which again serves as one of those cornerstones of why and how we're able to borrow as cost effectively as we are as a city. We'll talk about our financial policies. I'll tell you right on the front end that all of this will keep us in line with our financial policies. So I think that's sort of table stakes, so to speak, whenever we're here, is making sure we're in line with those policies, and we'll do that. And lastly, we're going to talk about fund balance. And we do this a fair amount, as you're aware over the years, but really linking this together with this particular project, and how it is we make sure we ensure we memorialize and really set up for a long-term legacy of PCOS's financial standing. And that's by enhancing our existing financial policy guideline. We're not asking to put more dollars into that. You have a very substantial amount in your policy, but really just enhance the level that is already in there, in the minimum level, so that when lenders, when rating agencies, when outside entities are looking at PCOS and saying, will PCOS be credit worthy? Will they have high credit ratings into the future, let alone today? That's really what the action with respect to the fund balance policy is intended to do, is set us up for the long term. It's certainly going to look good to lenders today, and it'll be a good message to send to them as we think about, with your blessing, financing this Public Safety Center. But it'll also make sure we set a precedent that for the time being, the longer term future will remain in very, very good shape. So we'll talk some more detail about that. But first, with the Public Safety Center, just a couple overviews here in terms of the bigger picture. So, estimated at about a $13 million project, plus or minus, I think in the high 12s right now, but kind of round that off, say it's about $13 million. And mentioned there, the ARPA funding. So that's at federal stimulus funding, I'm sure you're very conversant in terms of working with Randy and Tanya, and some of those federal dollars that have come in there. And so what these dollars are giving us the opportunity to do is to go out and make a major investment in terms of the Public Safety Center, use a lot of that federal money, about $9 million, and then really only have to borrow what we think for the moment is about $4 million. And you notice there, that second line, the city-issued debt at $4 million. Part of the strategy here is to make sure that we are flexible in understanding that while the exact cost of the project isn't yet known, we want to make sure that we take advantage of rates while they're good, take advantage of some of this momentum. And so the idea here and the concept is, let's lock in basically that $4 million. That keeps us in line with what was approved within your budget. You've already budgeted for this proactively, by virtue of your 2023 budget. In the planning that you'll see a little bit of, and we've done a lot with Randy and Tanya, we've kind of mentally planned in the background, as though if we were to need, and not saying we will, but if we were to need some more dollars, we know we have a little bit of capacity in the budget. We certainly don't want to on the front end necessarily lock all of that in because we don't exactly know what the project is, but we've purposely tried to plan on the conservative side, so that from a budgetary standpoint, meaning from the cash flows, and especially from the real estate tax rate, we have a little bit of contingency built into all of this. We note there in the second bullet point, we'll show you a graph on the next page. You may be very much aware of interest rates. They certainly are higher than they were the last two years, but that was from all time low levels. So we're at a very favorable level in terms of interest rates thus far. And so we note there the $4 million that we would plan to borrow in the immediate term, to make sure that we have sufficient funding to get going, with the contingency in here to say if we needed to, and again, it's a big if, maybe another $2 million, a lot to be figured out before we'd ever come to that decision. We've got some of that contingency for that $2 million proactively planned within the city's budget. So the way we would do that, similar to what we've done in the past, is to competitively bid this to banking institutions. That's local banks, that's regional banks, that's national banks. Given your credit ratings, given the relative size of this, we think we'll get a fair amount of interest from all of those different types of entities, as you'll look very attractive to those lenders. So page number three, in terms of where we are interest rates. So we've shown you two different graphs here. One on the left-hand side shows a longer term history. It goes back to 1980. This is what we call the bond buyer index. So this is kind of like watching like the S and P 500, or the Dow Jones Industrial Index, but in this case, it's for municipal bonds, in terms of tax exempt borrowing rates. And I think what you see on the left-hand side there is over the last 40 years, we've had a general downward trend in terms of interest rates, and it certainly has bounced around a lot the last couple of years. So you take your eye to the right-hand graph there, and what you see there is going back to about August of 2018, about four years of history there on the right-hand side. That index was in and around 4%, and then we went through 2019, all the way through the COVID pandemic year of 2020 through 2021, at extraordinarily low levels, which the city was able to capitalize on. If you remember, the financing for the second portion of the middle school was done some of those very low time periods. And the initial financing for the middle school was done on the early side of that graph. And so really, when you take a step back and think about where we are in terms of interest rates, take yourself to the far right of that far right-hand graph, we're certainly higher than we were last year, but still historically speaking, very, very favorable. And so we just want to give you that perspective. We know it's in the news a lot in terms of what the feds doing, et cetera, et cetera. But for a good credit, in terms of credit ratings like the city is, and a tax exempt borrowing that we're doing, we expect the interest rates will continue to be very favorable. Part of the reason we expect those to continue to be very favorable is the city's credit ratings. Very hard earned, earned over a lot of years of working through tough budgets, and you now enjoy two very, very strong credit ratings. And so what you see here, we have a rating from both Moody's and Standard and Poor's, which gets shortened down to S and P. And we've highlighted here the initial credit ratings that the city had. Those were in the A range. Those are those yellow circles in kind of the middle. They were strong at the time, very, very commendable for a city of this size. But what we've been able to do since that time period, and really the credit to this council and prior councils, is work those ratings gradually upwards. So we went to the blue circles there, AA3 and AA+. And we now, with the kind of light green color there, with Moody's, we have a AA2 rating, which is what they call very strong. It's the second from the top in terms of the credit rating that Moody's provides. And then with S and P, we actually have a AAA credit rating. So that is the single best credit rating that a local government can have, regardless of size, better than, or as good as is possible in terms of the universe of credit ratings. And so all the things that we're talking about in terms of the plan of finance for the Public Safety Center, in terms of enhanced fund balance policies, all kind of feeds back to how do we make sure we're maintaining, if not maybe enhancing, our existing credit ratings. A, it's important for a variety of reasons, economic development, et cetera, but it also is a cost saver. So that we do need to go borrow for something like the Public Safety Center. Lenders are going to look at something like our credit rating and use that, much like they would your credit score if you were going to go get a mortgage or a car loan, et cetera. The better that credit score, the lower the interest rate. So it really ends up being a cost saver to taxpayers. On page number five, we'll just give you kind of a graphical depiction here of our existing city debt service. This is for the general fund. The dark green is what we have in the books right now. The biggest single piece of that is indeed tied to the middle school. And so what you see is you look at those dark green bars, and this is going from 2023, current fiscal year, out through the final maturity. It's currently 2040. All of this debt is fixed rate. So as rates move up, all of our existing debt is fixed rate installment payments, just like mortgages. What you see is we get to 2028 into 2029, and we have a nice decline, nice drop off that frees up capacity, frees up some space in the budget, and it also creates an ability to kind of layer in the debt service in this public, excuse me, Public Safety Center with pretty minimal impact to your overall budget. And that debt service in the Public Safety Center is represented in the light green there at the top. And so the plan is to repay that, which will be a generational asset to taxpayers over about a 20-year time period. We'll bid that all out, obviously, to the banks. We've got certain planning estimates in here. Before council's asked to finally approve anything, we'll bring all those results back to you. You see here our fund balance, if you've never thought about our debt policies. So we've mentioned how important those are to the rating agencies and lenders. And what this is simply showing on both the left-hand and right-hand side is that by virtue of moving forward this project, we'll be in compliance with all of our debt-related policies, and in fact, still have a fair amount of capacity to the extent there is a surprise, or some other project that comes up in the future, we'll have some capacity to take something like that on, again, to the extent anything else is identified. So, left-hand side is debt service to expenditures. That is basically how many pennies out of every dollar in the budget go to make a debt service payment. The red line is our policy level. That's at 10%. And what you see is that when you look at the green bars there, we basically hover in and around 8%. And so a simple way of thinking about that is about eight pennies or eight cents out of every dollar in the budget is going to make a debt service payment. What you see below is that, at least for Standard and Poor's, they consider that to be a very strong level, basically the strongest level of debt service expenditures you can have. Right-hand side, debt to assessed value, very similar story. Whereby our policy's at 3%. Even when we have this project, we end up at about 2%, and then continue to fall off into the future because the existing debt that we have and this new loan, we make fixed annual installments, so we're paying the principal down each and every year, like you would expect with a mortgage or anything else that's done in a responsible manner. I'm going to make one other very important point that I didn't on this page, some of the details in the back. And that is if you take yourself and those members that were in council back when we kind of all got going on the middle school financing, there was an initial plan of finance that was put in place whereby the council at the time raised the appropriate tax rate in terms of real estate tax rate, to make sure we can responsibly afford that middle school and a couple of other capital projects. And so while we don't have all the details in here, the long story short is that by virtue of those actions, and by virtue of interest rates on the middle school financing, and other financings coming in so much better, by virtue of our ability to refinance existing debt for savings purposes, we're able to accomplish this project without needing anything else in terms of the real estate tax rate. So it's a very important point. I should have mentioned it on this page, in terms of the cash flows. And that's really what I mean when I say minimal impact to the budget. What we really mean by that is council's taken the actions it needs to in terms of real estate tax rate to make sure we can afford this without having to go back to the taxpayers and ask for anything else that basically fits within the budget. So now we'll get to page seven and shift gears just a little bit, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Kind of mentioned on the outset, the fund balance policy, it's a longstanding policy of the city, and it is of most cities and counties. All your neighbors arguably going to have a fund balance policy. We've historically had a policy that said, we need to keep a minimum unassigned fund balance in the general fund of between 12 and 15%. And there were years, we took this graph back before 2017, where that was pretty thin. There were years we were worried about, going back 10-plus years in the recession, worried about having to do payday loans, and worried about cash flow just to run the city on, call it a week-to-week and day-to-day basis. You are a very long way from that in a good way, meaning those are not worries that we have anymore. But that policy was said as being somewhat aspirational, back when things were much thinner for the city, and arguably less solid financially. And that was set to get to 12% and hopefully get to 15%. What you've been able to do as a city is really go through that, that kind of, call it initial, you know, historical policy of 12 to 15%. What you see there is you're now upwards of 20% in terms of your existing general fund balance relative to the size of the budget. So our recommendation to you tonight is that we go ahead, instead of having a range of 12 to 15, just go ahead and set that policy limit at 15. So we'd basically do away with the 12% and say the floor, the lowest we would want to go, and not that we're recommending we really take it any lower than you are right now for the moment, but the bare minimum floor would go to that 15% in terms of the fund balance policy. And what that's going to do is it'll, A, send a good signal to lenders. So as we're going through this Public Safety Center financing, they'll send a very good signal to the lenders that, again, the sustainability of PCOS financially will be there into the future. And it'll also make sure that, you know, to the extent we have a rough patch in the future, which there's always going to be some issue we need to work through, we've got some contingency. We're not worried about the cash flow, meaning day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, like we were in the past, you know, call it 10 years or thereabouts. And so that really is our recommendation to you. Importantly, and you know this in council, but for members of the public, this doesn't require we go put any more money into the reserves of the fund balance. You already have it there. It's really just a change in terms of the wording of the policy to kind of make sure we've moved the bar up a little bit, but does not require we go take any more taxpayer dollars and put it into the fund balance. It's already there. So with that, Mayor, members of council, I'll just walk you through the schedule here quickly, and happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. But top of the schedule, obviously here this evening, a warm August 8th to present this to you. And really, our ask tonight, Mr. Mayor, is just kind of, we call it the head nod, the blessings, so to speak, of council to continue moving forward with this plan. What we would do after this is work through the balance of August, a variety of steps. To competitively bid this out, there will be a public hearing that is required by virtue of the Public Finance Act in Virginia, really leading to your September 12th City Council meeting. So at that meeting, we would have all these results in terms of the bidding, the banks, the interest rates, the terms, the conditions, and be able to bring that back to you for approval, if you so choose, based upon all the details and results that we'll bring back. So that, that really is the only action, per se. We've got the 26th of September, just in case we need it as a placeholder. We always kind of like to have Plan B, but we're really expecting by the 12th that we should have some pretty good information to bring back to you that you could take action on at your, at your pleasure. I believe along with that, Mr. Manager, there's a process with respect to maybe the architect side of things with the project. I'm happy to jump in there or not.
Sure. Thanks, Kyle. Just to keep the public aware of sort of how we're pacing this project, we are in the RFP selection process for the architect and engineer in this building, and negotiations are underway. And we anticipate having a recommended contract for council consideration in December. We're sure for the first meeting, with the second meeting on our backup plan.
And so, again, kind of bringing this all together to allow you to move forward, again, into that September time period. If it takes a little longer, we'll make sure we keep good rest of that. And then, closing then, by virtue of this being a pretty efficient process, we could have those funds in hand basically by, you know, call it about October 1st, if not a little bit before, and be ready to go on that project, again, with your approvals pending all of that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is my presentation this evening. Any questions that you have, or manager, if there's anything else that you'd like me to add in there, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Kyle. Well done. Are there any questions, Kyle?
I had one on your slide seven. I'm going to make the bold assumption here that 15 is better than 12. Okay. Because I was, usually when you think of interest rates and loans and stuff like that, higher numbers are not better, lower numbers are better, so.
Mayor, yeah, I probably should have made that clarification as we're shifting in terms of interest rates. The concept there, that's not a borrowing rate, per se, but that's a portion of our budget that we keep in reserve. So kind of like the savings of the rainy day that maybe you have in personal finance. Kind of if you wanted to keep 90 days of, you know, sort of your household expenses in reserve, it's a similar kind of concept.
I had one question. So do we anticipate that our Moody's rating of AA2 and S and P AAA will stay, that we'll keep those same ratings?
Yeah, yeah, good question. In terms of will this, all these various actions, Public Safety Center, impact that? We expect that we will indeed maintain that. And I purposely flip back to this page. Between this page in terms of where we are policy-wise and relative debt levels, and then this page in terms of making sure we've got a very, very strong fund balance. Again, to the councilman's question, a higher number on that fund balance is certainly better. And so moving that 12 to 15, to just 15, and on top of that, being closer to the 25% range, I think those, those series of facts certainly work, work in our favor. So we're expecting that both Moody's and S and P would be fine with this in terms of the overall plan. And the last piece, because you've already proactively budgeted for the debt service within your budget, it's, in effect, already paid for, so to speak, in the budget.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Kyle, thank you. Well done. Unless council has some...
Oh, go ahead, Bud, I'm sorry.
I do have a question. Similar to what, the question that we just asked, Mr. Yar, increased debt as we're projecting, should we have an emergency in the future? How close does this debt put us to losing our credit rating? Should we have to borrow money for extended emergency in the future?
It's a good question in terms of exactly how close. And again, councilman Southall's on the phone here. So, you've, you have a 10 percent debt service to expenditure policy. This would keep us in and around 8 percent. So, we'd have about, call it a two percentage point, or about 20 percent of that borrowing capacity kind of left in reserve if indeed there was an emergency or a problem. And the other piece of it is a variety of our existing loans. We've got very flexible prepayment provisions, so if we needed to, again, thinking about the opposite situation we are now, if we had a problem, if we had an emergency, et cetera, we needed to go refinance, restructure some of our debt, much of our debt has flexible prepayment provisions that would allow us to kind of have that flexibility if we needed to in an emergency situation. And hopefully that helped answer that question.
Anything else?
All right. Kyle, thank you. Unless council has some objection, we probably need to ask our financial advisor to distribute an RFP to solicit competitive proposals for the public safety building financing, and we'll look back in September.
Yes.
I don't hear any objections, so there, we're ready to roll.
We will go forth and look forward to seeing you September.
You have to vote.
And people don't think you're sleeping.
Kyle, thank you. Appreciate it. All righty, let's move on to our audience for visitors. As for anyone in our audience who would like to address council, on any issue at this time, we'd be delighted to hear from you. Seeing none, we move on to approval of minutes, please.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes for our regular session June 13, 2022.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made, second, we adopt the regular session June 13, 2022 minutes. Any concerns, comments, corrections, additions, anything tonight? Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
I wasn't here, but I watched the movie. Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. All right, a matter on our agenda is a public hearing. Randy, you want to address it at all before we get Wally out here?
Go ahead and let Wally do it, because all this inadvertently hit the same things he's going to hit, so.
Okay.
I'll ask him to present, and if he misses something, which I doubt, I'll do.
I doubt it. All right, Wally, we're ready.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
All right, you have before you a revised Appendix C with your site plans in our current Let me start with the start. This is actually being done pursuant to a strategy in the 2018-2038 Comprehensive Plan, which states that the city needs to review and update city zoning subdivision site plan, and sign ordinance says to ensure coherence, clarity, and compliance with current law and development practices. So, that's why we're here tonight. We're trying to make this a little clearer. Certainly, we have made some changes to the formatting, you'll notice, and that is for the purpose of clarity, and legal issues are also covered here. You'll notice there's a lot of changes to the preliminary site plan and final site plan as you get into Article Two. I want to point out, though, in legal issues, you know, sort of glossed over that, it covers a lot of different things, but one of the things that it does cover is administrative approval of the site plan rather than city council review of every site plan. I do want to point that out. Basically, under state code, if the application complies with all of the site plan ordinance provisions, you really don't have any choice except to approve it. So, you know, the feeling is, why even put city council in our position? I will say that the state has gradually, as time has gone on... Can you hear me, Bud? Mr. Southall?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Yes, I can.
I sometimes talk a little softly here, I got to make sure I'm in the mic at all times. I forgot where I left off, but I think I was talking about the administrative review of site plans. The other thing is too, the state code over a period of time has gradually gone towards the idea of streamlining the processes, if you will, to make it easier to approve a site plan or more timely anyway. Same thing, you'll notice when we get to subdivision ordinance in a few months, same sort of language in there too. I want you to know that this has been vetted through the city attorney and through, of course, the city manager. Never make a step without letting the manager know what's going on. Changes in there are, in bold italicized and underlined text, deletions are struck through. Now, as you had a chance to go through this, I'm sure you recognized a lot of language switching around. Let me just cover some overarching things, and then if there are specific questions, we can go from there. As I said before, the entire ordinance is being updated to reflect current state code language. You'll notice, and probably have noticed, that throughout the appendix or the ordinance, the term city manager is deleted and the term zoning administrator is used. The definition of zoning administrator, we do define within this section, section one dash four, and let me read that to you, because that's important. The subdivision administrator, I mean, the zoning administrator, sorry, getting ahead of myself, aren't I? The plan approving agent or is designated annual authorized agent slash representative. The city manager shall act as the zoning administrator unless the city council appoints a different person as zoning administrator. And I actually believe there are provisions in state code to that effect, but we've codified it in our ordinance here to make it clear. I noticed in looking over the text, I've heard from several of you, and we could certainly make the change in accordance, where we say in accord, we could certainly say in accordance, and that would basically just be to show consistency throughout the document. Instead of saying in accord here and in accordance over here, we just say the same thing in all places. Article one and Article two, Article two has the definition of site plan and the ordinance, the appendix, is site plans. So, if the council feels that that is confusing, we could always put on Article one, site plan slash in general, dash in general. Article two, we could put site plan dash submission review and administrative provisions. That would probably be a good way to sum that up.
I like that. You and I had talked about that. To me, when I started reading this, it's a site plan, and then there was a section called site plan, it immediately confused me.
Sure.
I like the idea of making sure the two sections have their own thing. People that work this all the time understand that, but if someone's new to the game, it runs time out.
Understood, understood. I can go about as much in depth with this as you want to, but at this point, I think that I will stop. Well, actually, let me say a few things about lighting. The one thing that's new in here is lighting provisions. We've never really had lighting provisions in the city before. We've had, I think our old provision was adequate lighting, you know, that's open for interpretation. As part of the work sessions we did with the planning commission, we did show everybody what a lighting plan looks like, and I've got an example here, and as well as what shielding lighting looks like. And I also have a photometric measure, which measures the amount of foot candles. And I can tell you, and I can do a demonstration if the council wants to, but I will tell you that one road, well, let me point you right up, there's a rather smaller light there. One road behind where the mayor's sitting now, if you go all the way to the wall, that's about .5 foot candles. And like I say, I can certainly demonstrate that here tonight, should the council wish. Everything else, I think I'll be quiet and be happy to take your questions.
Let's see if there are any really want to comment first?
Just a couple of minutes if I could. First of all, this has been on our long-term plan for some time, so I commend the planning commission, council, and their adoption of the comprehensive plan and staff to do... This is just the first or second, depending on how you think we've done with signs, with more coming. Some of the changes that we're making, we're being asked to consider tonight were changes that we made in other places that I've worked 20 years ago to reflect changes in that state code at that time. So, there are a number of state code changes, some of them are somewhat dated. Now, just because our ordinance is out of sync with the state code, the state code trumps it, so we know that, so we've been operating with this knowledgeable disconnect, and so this will fix that. There's several changes to change city manager to zoning administrator, really sets you up for a future in which you may wish to hire a zoning administrator, and he or she would do that rather than a duty as assigned to the city manager, which has been, that was my surprise when I came here, that I was a zoning administrator. But, and I still am, but it sets that up for the future. The whole lighting thing is separate and essentially, that is really the only significant new aspect. I think, Wally, I want to speak for you, but I think this is true. You tried to minimize all the changes to sort of clearing up ambiguity, reconciling state code changes, the zoning administrator city manager thing. Your intent was not to go much further with that. The planning commission did have the interest in the light standards, so that's there, but you may at some point in the future see a more significant set of updates, but before we could even do that, we needed to get how ordinance is in shape, which to work, and this is that. And I'm very thankful for your work and your team and the planning commission.
Well, you're absolutely right about that, and thank you. That is absolutely right. Things like, I'll just throw at an example. I mean, things like landscaping, we may look at in the future, but we're not changing that tonight.
Are there other questions, Wally?
Oh, so the only ones, he and I, Wally and I had talked, and those accorded to in accordance, and the titles for those sections was the thing that I was...
I think it's like eight replacements.
Right.
That we need.
Worth doing, but not substantive in nature, so we can handle that unless you want to do specific motions, amended language, we can handle those types of things.
Certainly doesn't change the meaning.
Essentially, Scrivener's errors and fix them with a modification to the motion.
I agree.
Anybody else?
Hey, Wally, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in our audience who would like to address this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for action of council.
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending Appendix C site plans to require and regulate the preparation of preliminary and final site plans to provide for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance and for amendments there too, to prescribe penalties for violations of its provisions.
Okay, just a second.
Second.
All right. Most main, second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments?
I think Bud said something.
Bud, did you?
I think he called.
No, I did not.
He's, I didn't hear. He called.
He called, okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Let's move on to new business. First item, resolution authorizing participation in Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office Program. And Chief Gates is here to help us with that one. Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, through the National Defense Authorization Act, the DAA, Congress authorized many years ago to transfer excess Department of Defense property to federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies. Program provides clothing, office supplies, tools, rescue equipment, vehicles, small arms, items like that, to agencies once they're no longer needed by the Department of Defense. Items of property are provided at little to no cost to the receiving agency. And by that, I mean, there are some items we may have to pay for transportation or delivery fees, that type thing, but a lot, but the actual item itself is transferred to the local agency at no cost to the agency other than transfer. And for the police department, we want to have an ever continuing enhancement of our delivery of service to our community. And this program would allow us access to, allowing access to the system gives us the opportunity to identify and acquire equipment that's available at no cost to our community, no cost to our taxpayers. That would allow us to enhance our service. And the example that I put in here is just, honestly, the first thing that came to mind is occasionally through this system, items such as a high water rescue vehicle becomes available, which would give us the ability, when the tidal elevations come in, we're able to go in and help people get out and get to safety. So, before you this evening is just a resolution for the council to authorize the police department's participation in this program through the law enforcement assistance program.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any questions, Chief Gates?
Someone prepare for the motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing participation in Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office Program.
Okay. Just a second.
Second.
Okay, most main, second, we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments, questions regarding this resolution?
Just a question, is this a renewal? Haven't we been doing this? We got a big truck, police department, and some other stuff, I thought.
I'm not sure that we've ever participated in this specific program before, and that truck that you're talking about was more than 13 years ago, so I'm not quite sure.
Okay. Okay, I just wondered if this was a renewal?
It was here when I got here.
And if it required renewing ever so many years, or...
I don't think so. I think this is a very, this is a new program for us.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion made, second, any concerns, comments, all the questions, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. Let's move on to item two, it's an ordinance amending section 70 dash 121 of the city code to allow the painting of street addresses on curbs. Mr. Wally?
Me again. This is an ordinance amending section 70 dash 121 of the city code to allow for painting the street address on curbs. We have been getting at least one notable request, and we probably will be able to anticipate some other requests on the heels of this. What we found is that we could really see no policy reason for not allowing this, but our ordinance didn't allow it. So, we are changing our ordinance tonight, pending approval, of course, to allow for the painting of house numbers on street curbs. Now, you know, it's a good way of identifying property addresses, can lead to faster emergency response times, facilitate the delivery of goods and services, and generally assist the public in finding a specific address. Now, one important thing to mention here is that the street addresses will be installed by our public works department, and this will ensure uniformity. We even have a policy, you may have noted that in your packet, city of Pecoson Curve Address Painting Policy. This covers the purpose and the policy... This covers the purpose and the policy which says, no person shall print, illuminate, or in any way affix the numbers of the property address to the curb in front of the property unless it is done so by the city Public Works Department in accord with this policy. Obviously, you're going to have to have a curb at your house to even be eligible for But, but, I mean, we've got permitted work hours which are going to be by appointment Monday through Friday, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out thanks to John Anderson, who's not here in the Public Works Department, and Chief Gates, I think he's still here, in putting this together, and of course, Tanya and Mr., Ms. O'Connell and Mr. Wheeler as well. It's pretty straightforward. I'll be happy to take any specific questions the council may have.
All right, let's see if there are any.
This doesn't negate that part right above it where they are still required to have a number within so many feet of the door.
That's correct. This is just giving them another option.
Okay.
So if a citizen wants it, they just call the city and say, I'd like it. They pay their $25?
They'll fill out an application and a $25 fee. We'll actually take it because Public Works, we have to take it to the treasurer's office, and then we'll remit the, to the Public Works, and they'll schedule a time to come out there.
And there's no obligation to, like, if they get it done once and it starts fading, they don't have to keep it up if they don't want to and pay to have it redone?
Well, the way the ordinance and the policy is written, they would pay another $25 fee to get it repainted. And you wouldn't want it to fade too much, otherwise it sort of defeats the purpose of having, you know, the street address on the curb.
Right. But that's their, is that their choice whether they want to have it done?
It's their choice, yes.
It's their choice.
I mean, they can still do a house number if they want to.
Right. I was just thinking, like, for example, if one citizen gets it done to their house and then they sell their house and the next person doesn't care about it, would they be obligated to have it?
If they want to have a house number?
Right.
Then I reckon that would be okay. As long as they have some visible means of identification of the address.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay. You answered my question, that if somebody decides I don't want to pay to have it repainted, I'm just going to let it fade, they can do that.
Yeah, as long as they've got an address on the mailbox or...
Right, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Good.
Wally, has it been any thought given to whether it would be to the left or the right of the entrance? Because I'm thinking it's in some places, three feet, if somebody parks a car within three feet of that entrance, the tire may block that number. And I'm just thinking, should it be closer than three feet so that that can't happen? Because then either the front end or the back end would be blocking the entrance.
I think the idea of having at least three feet would be that the address is far enough out from where it would not be blocked by a vehicle. But obviously, you wouldn't want to park on the street.
Maybe under the mailbox?
Yeah.
Because normally, people don't park in front of their mailbox.
Yeah. That's true. I would think you'd want it closer than three feet to the entrance.
I always make the point of not parking in front of my mailbox, knowing that the mail people will complain.
Sure, right.
So maybe that's a good, would be a good place to always put it and consistent.
We can add that, yeah.
Add that, sure. Absolutely.
You want to take it back?
That's really embedded in the policy, which is an administrative policy. So if council is comfortable, you can go ahead and act if you would like us to put together specific language in the administrative policy for your review prior to that, to do that at next meeting or at a future meeting, whatever, it's the pleasure of council.
Is that the pleasure of council?
Public Works would have enough common sense to look at where are they going to put it to make sure it doesn't get blocked if a car parks there.
Okay, well, so, let's move on with the adoption of the ordinance.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending section 70 dash 121 of the city code to allow the painting of street address on curbs.
All right, sir. A second?
Second.
All right. And a motion made second that we adopt the ordinance. Are there any questions or concerns, comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Fie.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassell.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Move on to item four. It's a resolution making appointments to the wetlands board. Someone prepared with some names?
You skipped three.
I skipped three? I'm sorry. An ordinance requesting additional appropriations. I saw you get up. I apologize. I apologize. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council, citizens. I bring before you tonight an ordinance requesting additional appropriations to our general fund for fiscal year 2023. Attached for your review is an appropriation request for fiscal year 2023. For our general fund revenues, it is anticipated that the city will recognize an additional $23,828 from our library state aid and fire department donations totaling $500. The revenue increases are listed below. The general fund expenditure appropriations will be used for these same expenditure areas, for library programs and services, as well as fire community services. Attached, you will find an ordinance appropriating $23,828 to the general fund budget for these financial grants and donations for your approval. If approved, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Respectfully request a motion.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of Lee? Okay. Not, is there a motion?
May I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations in the general fund for fiscal year 2023?
Okay, we got a motion made second that we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, any questions? Thank you, Lee. If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fie.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassell.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Now, we can make some appointments to the wetlands board. Are there names?
May I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the wetlands board with the following names inserted. James Owens from the Eastern Precinct, whose term will expire August 31, 2027. Thomas L. Carlson from the Western Precinct. Altona from the Western, Charles L. Winston. Their terms will expire June 30, 2027.
Okay, thank you, Buddy. We've got a motion made, a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made second that we adopt the resolution with those names inserted. Any concerns or comments regarding them? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Fie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Mayor Hassell.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Our last item is a resolution making appointments to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
May I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Parks Recreation Advisory Board with the following name inserted. And I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. Jennifer Mulring from the Western Precinct, whose term will expire March 31, 2025.
And she is here in the audience with us tonight?
Oh, good, good. I hope I pronounced it correctly.
Close, close. Okay, close is good.
All right, we, did we have a motion? If we did, I missed it.
That was him. He moved.
Okay. Do we have a second? I missed that, too. Okay. Well, we have a motion made second that we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments?
I talked to Ms. Mulring earlier today, and I think she'll make an excellent candidate. We'll miss Eden Harris, who had to leave, taking a great opportunity for her to live in England for a couple of years. But I think an excellent replacement, this young lady right here.
I agree. I spoke to her as well and read her impressive resume, so.
This is the 13-year-old? 11, yeah, okay, got it.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. All right, we have a motion made second. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fie.
Aye.
Mayor Hassell.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. Comments to city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items this evening. One is kind of an announcement to the public. Council is aware, we provide copies of the required annual CRS report. CRS is the Community Rating System Program, which is part of the National Flood Insurance Program, of which we are a part. Each year, we are required to prepare and disseminate court, the contents of which largely prescribed. But just like everything else we do in CRS world, we get graded on this, and this is a required element. So for the members of the public that might be interested in receiving a copy of the work that we did in this past year relating to the CRS program, you can find it on our website, under Flood Information, under the Community tab, or if for any reason you would like to get a copy outside of our website, both city manager's office and community development will be glad. The second item, a piece of good news to share, hadn't had a chance to share with anybody yet. Through the work of the police department, the chief, and also Adam Stevens, I'm pleased to report that we made application for that fourth SRO position. We received notification very recently that that application has been accepted by the state. So that will essentially pay the direct salary and related cost for that for the next three fiscal years and hope and expect to have that fourth SRO position up and running in our schools prior to Thanksgiving.
Great.
So that's about seven months quicker than we thought.
Great. David, anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Gordon. I'd like to call attention to a letter that was received within the city from none other than the National Weather Service. It was addressed to Deputy Fire Chief Mike Bryant, who also serves as our Emergency Management Coordinator. And I'd like to take just a few minutes to read an excerpt from that letter. It is with great pleasure that NOAA's National Weather Service Office in Wakefield, Virginia, officially news the city of Pecosin is a storm-ready community. This recognition clearly shows your dedication to providing the citizens and visitors to the city of Pecosin best possible emergency management and preparedness operation. Your ability to monitor weather conditions and receive national weather services watches and warnings is excellent, and I feel citizens of Pecosin are well-served abilities. The letter goes on to say, "City of Pecosin continues to set a fine example of what it means to be a storm-ready community. The working relationships the city of Pecosin has with other storm-ready communities on the peninsula is a great model that others can look to as an example for improving their service during..." Fine compliment that is to the professionalism of our staff, that the National Weather Service considers the city of Pecosin to be an example for others to... I'd like to thank Deputy Fire Chief Mike Bryant, Fire Chief Robert Holloway, our staff whose contributions have made this possible. And I'd also like to comment that the city's status as a storm-ready community is a great example of the value that we receive as tax-band citizens of Pecosin's when we pay our taxes. And just another example of a fine place to be. So thanks to all that made this possible.
Thank you for that, David. That's well done. We appreciate it. Buddy?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. Since we don't have a second meeting this month, this is pretty much in advance, the announcement that the Mobile Food Pantry will be Tuesday, August 23rd, from 10:00 to noon. And our host this month is Emus Baptist Church.
Another great program. Keith?
Yeah, I got a few things. Haven't seen y'all since May meeting because I missed the June meeting, and we didn't have one last month. So I got some things if I may. I've been able to attend a couple of meetings, one of the planning commission, one of the wetlands board meeting, and one of the architectural review board meeting. I'd like to thank all the volunteer members on those boards for putting in their time that it takes to keep the city moving forward. They all do a great job, and I tried to go and thank every one of them personally after their meetings ended. Just the amazing number of volunteers we have, and I'll mention some more about that later, that fill the boards and our commissions is just, just amazing. And they spend their time and effort. They don't sit back and just, okay, yes or no. They actually talk about the details of each request and spend the time, and I hope the people of the city appreciate it like I do. I'd also like to thank Parks Rec Public Works and the Pecosin City Public Schools. And kind of speaking on behalf of the pickleball consortium here in the town, they replaced the city schools, refurbished the tennis courts, and were basically going to get rid of the nets, but the nets were in better state than the city courts were. So they took those nets and put them up on the city courts, and it's a lot better, and the pickleball folks appreciate that, including the one I live with. I was also lucky enough to attend the Thomas Nelson Community College Transition to the Virginia Peninsula Community College event on the 7th of July, although I had to leave early and to get to see the actual stadium. They are now the Peninsula, Virginia Peninsula Community College, which doesn't roll easily off the tongue, but it's the new name of the institution there. Also, I was nice enough to be escorted by Chief Gates on a tour of the police department on the 19th of July, and I do appreciate the tour I was given and the people that I got to meet. They have an excellent facility down there, but I'm sure looking forward to a newer one. Just enough said there. I would like to add at the very end that encourage all citizens that are interested in being part of the community to volunteer for boards. We have over 70 positions on boards and commissions that need filling. We have about three or four open right now. Not all of them are by precinct, so don't think that just because you live in one precinct and you hear that an opening is there, that's not available. On our website, on our webpage, at the bottom is all the board openings, and if you have a request, you can go online or just call Kim here and find out what they are. And it's amazing, the talents you may have that you can share with others will be really a benefit to the city. And that's all I got.
All right, thanks, sir. Carrie?
Yes, I wanted to talk about the police department also. Went to the National Night Out, and the police department, and especially the two SROs, Officer Biggs and Gills, just did an excellent job putting that on for the citizens of Pecosin, so just wanted to mention that.
Sure. Jenna?
Nothing additional.
Okay, I don't have anything. It's a motion. Oh, Bud, I'm sorry.
No, I think everyone has covered it very well. I'd just like to thank everyone who attended in person there tonight and who watched by TV. I'd like to thank them for paying attention to the city government. It's very important.
Okay, Bud, thank you. I hope you feel better. Hey, we need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Okay? Motion made second, we adjourn. Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.